Bible Study, this is a good morning. We are live on the Revelation Bible Study. This is Cameron Cooley and we are starting our 10th session of the Revelation Bible Study. So let's go ahead and get started with prayer and then we'll go on from there. All right. Lord God in Jesus' name, first of all, we want to thank you for being so good to us and giving us time, grace, and mercy, oh God, to fulfill your purpose in the earth. Part of your purpose is helping us, oh God, to be more like you, oh God. As we draw near to you, your word says you draw near to us. So Lord, we ask you as we're studying the scriptures in the book of Revelation, as we're examining, oh God, what's said, oh God, what's been given to us. We ask that at the same time, oh God, that we would examine ourselves and that we would use the word, oh God, to be a reflection of your image on us, oh God, and help us, oh God, to live up to your image. Help us, oh God, to resist sin, to resist evil, oh God. And even as your word says, the weights and the sin which does so easily beset us. And help us, oh God, to be more like you, oh God, with each day, oh God. Even with each time, oh God, that we study the word together, we ask, oh God, that you'd help us to be more like you. And we praise you now, oh God. We ask you to give us wisdom, oh God, understanding, oh God, and a right mindset concerning your word. We thank you now in the name of Jesus, we pray. Amen. All right, we are here and I started out with prayer this morning. A scripture came to my mind as I was just getting up and preparing to be with everyone this morning. And it comes from Hebrews chapter four. And this technology is often faster than this technology. So I'm going to use the original format, Hebrews 12 and four. As we're going through these scriptures, we really find ourselves in a time where there are so many choices. There are so many ways to be out of the faith and few ways to be in the faith. Jesus says, "No man comes to the Father but by me." So I'm going to read verses one through four of Hebrews chapter 12. And this is what it says. "Wherefore, seeing we also are compassed about with so great a cloud of witnesses, let us lay aside every weight, and the sin which thus so easily beset us, and let us run with patience the race that is set before us, looking unto Jesus, the Author and Finisher of our faith, who for the joy that was set before him endured the cross, despising the shame, and has sat down at the right hand of the throne of God. For consider him that endured such contradiction of sinners against himself, lest ye be wearied and faint in your minds. Ye have not yet resisted unto blood, striving against sin." And that's the scripture that I wanted to read. "Ye have not yet resisted unto blood, striving against sin." In other words, we haven't given our lives trying to be righteous, trying to uphold what the Lord has given us. But Jesus has. He has resisted to blood. He resisted sin so much, the devil came after him. And Jesus gave his life resisting sin. Even though he resisted sin, the Bible says he was tempted in all points, like as we are, yet without sin, he gave his life for sin. So we have something to be thankful for. And I'm certainly grateful for what the Lord is doing in us. Last time on session nine, we looked at the 200 million strong army that would come against Israel. We looked at the mounting evidence that the source of that army or the place where that army would come from would be from one of the countries that was talked about in the book of Revelation and then also in the books of Daniel and Ezekiel more specifically. And all the nations that were mentioned were nations that are now Muslim nations. Rome, which is not an empire anymore, but the Roman Empire is not in place. But the people groups that were part of the Roman Empire are still there. They were probably in some people's minds at that time considered occupied territories. But we were looking more at the countries of Iraq, Syria, Iran, and Turkey. And we talked about the idea that Iraq and Syria are already under the control, at least in part, by a group that we call terrorists, ISIS, which calls themselves the Islamic State of Iraq and Syria. And they're called, they call themselves an Islamic state because their desire is to set up a state, another Islamic state, not unlike Iran, not unlike Saudi Arabia. But they want to set up an Islamic state that is the beginnings of, or maybe even the capital of, a future caliphate. The caliphate is an empire. It's a conglomeration of multiple Islamic countries under the rule of one ruler. Iran sort of works like that now, but they're only one country. Saudi Arabia works somewhat like that, but they're ruled by a king rather than a cleric. An interesting observation that we made last time that Turkey is a secular state and they have been secular for a little over 100 years after the fall of the Ottoman Empire. But under the Ottoman Empire, they were a caliphate. They were not a secular, but a religious country or religious state ruled by the Ottoman Turks, who were a dynasty of men who were thought to be descendants of Muhammad and who ruled that country for hundreds and hundreds of years. So we looked at the evidence and you can just go back and take a look at the previous video to get all that information. But this time, we're going to be talking about a period of time called Jacob's Trouble. And we're also going to be talking about the third temple or the new temple in Israel. And some very interesting things to see today. But when we start off with Jacob's Trouble, there's a lot of math that's involved. There's, we'll be looking at Old Testament prophets as well as the New Testament book of the Revelation. So why don't we go ahead and get right into it? And so we're going to start our video with Jacob's Trouble from the Fuel Project. All right, here we go.
Jeremiah prophesied about this time of trouble for Israel, saying, "In all history, there has never been such a time of terror. It will be a time of trouble for my people Jacob or Israel, yet in the end, they will be saved." Jacob's Trouble is also mentioned by Jesus in the Olivet Discourse. "And when you see Jerusalem surrounded by armies, then you will know that the time of its destruction has arrived. Then those in Judea must flee to the hills; those in Jerusalem must get out; and those out in the country should not return to the city; for those will be days of God's vengeance, and the prophetic words of the Scriptures will be fulfilled. How terrible it will be for pregnant women and for nursing mothers in those days; for there will be disaster in the land and great anger against this people. They will be killed by the sword or sent away as captives to all the nations of the world; and Jerusalem will be trampled down by the Gentiles, until the period of the Gentiles comes to an end." Why is God specifically pouring out his wrath on Israel, Jerusalem even, his holy city? Because they still have an unpaid debt. There is still some unfinished business between God and his people. As Jesus says, "The prophetic words of the Scriptures must be fulfilled." What prophetic words are these? Well, back in Daniel's time, around 535 B.C., Israel had been invaded and taken captive by the Babylonians. This in itself was punishment for disobedience. While in captivity in Babylon, Daniel was praying for God to forgive his nation and to let them return to their own land. He says, "I went on praying and confessing my sin and the sin of my people, pleading with the Lord my God for Jerusalem, his holy mountain. As I was praying, Gabriel, whom I had seen in the earlier vision, came swiftly to me at the time of the evening's sacrifice. He explained to me, 'Daniel, I have come here to give you insight and understanding. The moment you began praying, a command was given; and now I am here to tell you what it was; for you are very precious to God. Listen carefully, so that you can understand the meaning of your vision. A period of seventy sets of seven has been decreed for your people and your holy city to finish their rebellion, to put an end to their sin, to atone for their guilt, to bring in everlasting righteousness, to confirm the prophetic vision, and to anoint the most holy place.'" Seventy sets of seven is 490 years. This was the length of sentence that God had decreed for his people to atone for the rebellion and guilt. And note what it says, that when that time was finished, it would bring in everlasting righteousness. But this time period would be broken up into segments. Gabriel continues, "Now listen and understand: seven sets of seven plus sixty-two sets of seven will pass from the time the command is given to rebuild Jerusalem until a ruler, the anointed one, comes. Jerusalem will be rebuilt with streets and strong defenses, despite the perilous times." Gabriel says that from the moment the Babylonian king allows him to return from slavery and the command is given to rebuild Jerusalem, there would be seven sets of seven plus sixty-two sets of seven. That is 49 years plus 434 years, which is 483 years altogether. After those 483 years had passed, the anointed one would come. This, of course, is a reference to Jesus Christ, the Messiah. The calculations are complicated due to the fact that the Jewish calendar is lunar rather than solar and has 360 days in a year rather than 365. And that's not to mention the issue of leap years. However, we can simplify it a little if we understand that 483 Jewish years represents 173,880 days. Since the command to rebuild Jerusalem after their Babylonian captivity was given by King Antizoxius on March the 16th, 445 B.C., all we have to do is add 173,880 days to that date, and we should arrive at the coming of Jesus. Incredibly, 173,880 days after March 16th, 445 B.C., is April the 6th, 32 A.D., the exact date that Jesus is believed to have made his triumphal entry into Jerusalem. The third chapter of Luke tells us that Jesus started his ministry in the 15th year of the reign of Tiberias, that's 29 A.D. And we know that Jesus ministered for three years until the fourth Passover. That brings us up to the Passover of 32 A.D. The prophecy was fulfilled down to the day. The anointed one arrived right on cue. However, Israel didn't recognize their Messiah at this point and rejected him. So it was at this exact moment that Israel had their eyes blinded and their hearts hardened, so that all things might be fulfilled according to God's plan. In other words, he had to be crucified for the sins of the world. Therefore, it was at this exact same moment when Christ was offered to the Gentiles instead and the church age began. In other words, after 483 years, the clock stopped ticking on Israel's 490-year sentence. There was a break in the countdown while God's primary relationship switched from Israel to the church. That means that there is still one set of seven years left where God has to turn his attention back to Israel so that all prophecy can be fulfilled and the foolishness of their sentence can be completed. They still have a seven-year debt to pay. And that seven-year time period will begin from the moment the church age ends or the age of the Gentiles ends. When did the church age end? We noted that the church age ended back around the sixth or seventh seal. That's when the church seems to fade away from view and God returns his attention back to Israel, signified by the sealing of the 144,000. This final seven-year period that wraps up human history and ushers in eternal righteousness is sometimes called Daniel's 70th week. The angel Gabriel continues, "After this period of sixty-two sets of seven, the anointed one will be killed, appearing to have accomplished nothing; and a ruler will arise whose army will destroy the city and the temple. The end will come with the flood and war, and its miseries are decreed from that time to the very end. The ruler will make a treaty with the people for a period of one set of seven, but after half this time, he will put an end to the sacrifices and offerings. And as a climax to all his terrible deeds, he will set up a sacrilegious object that causes desecration, until the fate decreed for the defiler is finally poured out on him." Gabriel says that the anointed one, Jesus, would die, appearing to have accomplished nothing, at least in their eyes. You see, Israel expected their Messiah to come as a conquering warrior who would establish the nation, crush their enemies, and rule the world. Clearly, they didn't expect a suffering Messiah who would be flogged, crucified, and buried in a borrowed tomb. Yet if they had understood this prophecy and many others from the Old Testament, they would have known that this had to happen. Jesus came to die for sinners. This prophecy then goes on to say that when the clock starts ticking on the final seven-year stretch of their judgment, it would begin with a ruler making a peace treaty with them. However, halfway through that seven-year treaty, that is, after three and a half years, 42 months, or 1,260 days, he will break it to attack Jerusalem. At that time, there will be a war and a flood, and he will set up a sacrilegious idol to glorify himself on Temple Mount. This idol is often referred to as the abomination of desolation. Its presence on Temple Mount will indicate the subjugation and desolation of the city. This ruler, who we can identify as the Antichrist, will have authority to do whatever he likes for the second half of that seven-year period. And what he likes, unfortunately, is to wage war on the people of Israel. Hence the term Jacob's Trouble or Israel's Trouble. So although Jacob's Trouble will last for three and a half years from around the sixth trumpet, the Antichrist will actually have been on the scene for at least three and a half years prior. And although we can only guess as to when his rise to prominence will be, it would make sense if the peace treaty with Israel was signed around the time that the church age ends, back around the sixth or seventh seal. This will be when God's primary relationship switches away from the church back to Israel and will set Daniel's 70th week in motion. He won't be revealed as the Antichrist at that early stage. He will be considered a man of peace. Indeed, people will laud him for his ability to finally bring some stability to that Middle Eastern region. Remember Paul wrote, "When people are saying everything is peaceful and secure, then disaster will fall on them as suddenly as a pregnant woman's labor pains begin, and there will be no escape." Israel will have been lulled into a false sense of security at the time of the attack. The Antichrist's true nature will only be revealed halfway into the seven-year peace treaty when he will turn violent. That pivotal moment seems to coincide with a 200 million-strong army killing a third of the world. Having orchestrated that, he will then surround Jerusalem, looking to invade it and take control. And indeed, he will be allowed to trample on the city for another three and a half years. There are hints of Islam in this scenario again. Muhammad began as a man of peace while living in Mecca, but then infamously turned into a bloodthirsty warlord after moving to Medina. This may not be a coincidental parallel. Also, Muslims use the word hudna for peace treaties. And in reality, hudnas are not worth the paper they're written on, believing as they do that they can be legitimately broken at any moment and that they can even be used to deceive the enemy by lulling them into a false sense of security. The Antichrist peace treaty bears the hallmarks of a hudna. Above all, though, it's important to remember that God is allowing this to happen. Although it will seem like the Antichrist is in control as he runs amok over Israel and tears up Jerusalem, ultimately, God is still omnipotent. He's merely allowing this to happen so that Israel's sentence can be completed and their guilt atoned for. God has done this in the past by letting surrounding nations invade to take his people captive for a time. And he will do it again, but God is always in control.
All right, so there was a lot that was covered there. We looked at Daniel chapter nine. And if you're familiar with some of these visions that happened or that were discussed in the book of Daniel, there were several times that Daniel was visited by an angel, usually when he was praying. This particular time, he had been praying for Israel while they were in captivity. He had already been revealed some things about what would happen in the future, but he was praying and interceding for Israel. And I think that's very interesting that God revealed the deliverance of and other events that would happen for the people of Israel to an intercessor. So that means, or we've been given the example from the scripture, that God communicates with us when we pray for our people. Now, there have been people who've had many different dreams about things that would happen in the United States. And I've even had dreams about things that would happen in the United States. So I'd encourage each of us who are part of this Bible study or if you're watching this Bible study even after the fact, that you make sure that you take time to pray for people, that you pray for people groups, and that you pray for your own people. Now, we've talked about that ethnically, the United States is not a people group, as it were. However, we do need to pray for our country. We need to pray on behalf of our country, intercede on the behalf of this country. In the book of Isaiah, he said, "I'm a man of unclean lips; I dwell among a people of unclean lips." And while he had that vision of the Lord being high and lifted up, he said, "Woe is me, because I'm a man of unclean lips." The Lord had shown him his glory. But he admitted that he wasn't worthy to see his glory. And none of us is. The only thing that makes us worthy to have a relationship with God is the death, burial, and victorious resurrection of Jesus Christ. So it's also our responsibility that, like Jesus did, pray for his people that we pray for people as well, that we pray for our people, that we intercede on behalf of those who aren't praying. We saw the same thing in the case of Job. He had 10 children and he made sacrifices on behalf of his children in case they had sinned. Well, we know that people have sinned. We know that we have sinned. So it's important for us during our prayer time that we pray for the mercy of the Lord, that we confess our sins so that we will be forgiven, but we also confess our sins that will be healed. In the book of Second Chronicles, "If my people, who are called by my name, will humble themselves and pray and seek my face and turn from their wicked ways, then I'll hear from heaven; I'll forgive their sin, and I'll heal their lamb." The Lord can still do miraculous things even during this time. And I believe that the Lord will be doing some miraculous things during the time that's mentioned here. But the important things for us to get away from this, to take from the passage in Daniel and then also from Matthew chapter 24, is that this is a time of trouble for Israel. It's been deemed Jacob's Trouble or Israel's Trouble. And the last seven years of the prophesied weeks of trouble for Israel, the last seven weeks haven't yet happened, at least as far as we can tell. It may also be that we may not even know that the seven years has started until we get to the three and a half years. Why? Well, it's mentioned that the Antichrist will be revealed at the halfway point of the three and a half years. Therefore, we can't view every treaty that's made with Israel as being a treaty that's signed by the Antichrist. We won't know until the three and a half years, the first three and a half years are over. When those first three and a half years are over, he's revealed as the Antichrist because he takes place, he goes to the most holy place in the temple. And that temple has not yet been built, but we're going to see about that in just a few minutes. So I wanted to make mention that all these different prophecies that come from the Old Testament and the prophecies that are in the New Testament, they all work together, but the way we see them is not always clear. That's why in First Corinthians, Paul said, "We know in part and we prophesy in part." And that's been the case down through the history of the Bible, that we know and prophesy in part and that the sayings that the Lord gives us are not always immediately clear. And there's a good reason for that. The devil is still around and the devil is still busy. The Bible says that he's going to and fro, throwing the earth, seeking whom he may devour. We look at both the Old and the New Testaments. And because of that, he also hears the word too. He knows the word very well. Just as the mysteries of the scripture are a mystery to us, they're also a mystery to the devil. The devil does not know the future. He doesn't know everything that's going to happen. Because if he knew everything that was going to happen, he would be able to win some battles. But the Bible says, "Woe unto the inhabitants of the earth; for the devil's come down, Satan's come down to you with having great wrath; and he knows he has a short time." He knows he has a short time and also gives a vision of a woman with a child and she's protected from the dragon, even though the dragon tries to get her. The earth helps her. She's hidden in the forest or in the wilderness. If the devil knew all these things, he would have more power than he does. But he doesn't have that power. It's even talked about in the Old Testament that when Moses was buried by God, the devil wanted to get his body, but he couldn't because the Lord didn't reveal it to him. So there are things and places and times and all sorts of attributes of life and eternity that the devil does not know about, that he does not have control over, and he cannot touch. Even when Job and the Lord were discussing, not Job, but the devil and the Lord discussing Job, the devil said, "Well, you have a hedge around him. I can't get to him." And so we ought to know that our protection by the Lord is real. And I say all that to say that there's knowledge in the spirit that abounds, in the spirit realm, that abounds. And many different people, having read the prophecies, both in the Old Testament and the New Testament, have opinions about or ways to interpret or think about these prophecies. And this has been the case down through the history of the Bible, moving from the books of Daniel and Ezekiel all the way up to Jesus's time. It was apparent that the chief priest and the Sanhedrin in general was not aware of or was not, did not acknowledge by the scriptures that Jesus was the Messiah, but he indeed was the Messiah. But there were people who did know he was the Messiah, and they knew because of what the Bible said. And so I'm going to look at those, a couple of those examples. And two easy examples to take a look at are found in the book of Luke. And so I want to go there really quickly and just look at a couple of these examples. So if we look in the book of Luke, chapter two, starting at verse 25, we see a man named Simeon. So I'm going to read that. Luke chapter two and 25 says this, "And behold, there was a man in Jerusalem whose name was Simeon; and the same man was just and devout. He was just and devout; he read his Bible; he knew what the Old Testament said. He was just and devout." And he says, "Waiting for the consolation of Israel, and the Holy Ghost was upon him." So the Holy Spirit was upon him. He knew the word, and something had been revealed to him. Verse 26, "And it was revealed unto him by the Holy Ghost that he should not see death before he had seen the Lord's Christ." So there was a hint that was given to Simeon that he wouldn't die before he saw the Messiah. And this is something that was in someone's own individual situation. Obviously, he had told others about it. I don't know if he said, "The Lord has revealed to me that I won't die before I see the Messiah." Or I don't know if it happened after the fact that other people found out. After Jesus grew up and after, because the book of Luke was written, of course, after Jesus's death, burial, and resurrection. But Simeon had been revealed, it had been revealed to Simeon that he would not die until he saw the Messiah. So we see in the New Testament, it's also written that, "I hath not seen; neither ears hath not heard; neither has it entered the heart of man the things that God has prepared for those who love him; but it has been revealed unto us by his Spirit." So we receive things from the Spirit of God about the future, the things that God has prepared for his people. And this has happened, as I said, all throughout Bible history. So we just read verses 25 and 26 of Luke chapter two, verse 27. "And he came by the Spirit into the temple; the Lord led him into the temple; and when the parents brought in the child Jesus to do for him after the custom of the law, circumcision, then took he him up in his arms, and blessed God, and said, 'The Lord..." 'The Lord, now let us thy servant depart in peace according to thy word; for mine eyes have seen thy salvation, which thou hast prepared before the face of all people, to lighten the Gentiles; and the glory of thy people, Israel.' And Joseph his mother marvelled at those things which were spoken of him. And Simeon blessed them, and said unto Mary his mother, 'Behold, this child is set for the fall and rising of many in Israel, and for a sign which will be spoken against. Yea, a sword shall pierce through thy own soul, that the thoughts of many hearts may be revealed.'" And that's just amazing to me. So you have all these different Bible teachers or rabbis, all these different priests, you have the Sanhedrin, you have all these different groups. And then the different views of Bible prophecy also brought about sects, S-E-C-T-S, sects, different groups or divisions within Judaism that grouped themselves together based on how they understood prophecy. And the famous example is the Pharisees and the Sadducees. The Pharisees believed that there was a resurrection that was coming, and the Sadducees did not believe in the resurrection. So this is all based on Bible prophecy. So Simeon had a relationship with God. He was not only devout in his own personal relationship with God, but he also, the Lord also, let his spirit rest upon him and gave him revelation about Jesus Christ. So Simeon knew when he went to the temple, by being guided by the Holy Ghost, went to the temple, and when he got there, Mary and Joseph were there with Jesus, and they were ready for him to be circumcised and dedicated to the Lord. And when Simeon did that, the Lord revealed to him that that was the Messiah that he was holding in his arms. And he thanked the Lord for not only revealing it, but making manifest and bringing to pass what the Lord told him would happen. So we should look for the same thing to happen in our day, the dreams and visions that people are having. I don't believe it's by accident. I don't believe it's something that is odd, weird, or out of the way. It's just the pattern of what the Lord does. We have one more example. And that's following that in the same chapter, Luke, chapter 2, starting at verse 36. "And this is a woman named Anna." And it says this, "And there was one Anna, and prophetess, a prophetess, rather, the daughter of Fanyel, of the tribe of Aser. She was of a great age, and had lived with an husband seven years from her virginity. And she was a widow of about four score and four years, which departed not from the temple." She was only married seven years, but she was a widow for eighty-four years, which departed not from the temple, and served God with fastings and prayers night and day. So we see she's devout as well. And just like Daniel had been revealed these things in the Old Testament during his time of prayer, just like Simeon was devout and the Holy Ghost was upon him, and the Lord revealed things to him, we're seeing another example of someone who prayed, someone who was devout, someone who had a relationship with God. Verse 37, "And she was a widow of about four score and four years, which departed not from the temple, but served God with fastings and prayers night and day. And she, coming in that instant, right after Simeon, gave thanks likewise unto the Lord, and spake of him to all that looked for redemption of Jerusalem." Anna, the widow who was going back and forth to the temple, night and day, fasting and praying to the Lord, was one of the first evangelists, one of the first preachers to give the news, the good news of Jesus Christ coming into the world. And so we have all those different people who knew about the Lord. And even when we look at the wise men that came at the time of Jesus' birth, they followed the star. There was knowledge in the spirit realm about what was happening. And God revealed things to different people. And even when Herod heard about it, the wise men were minding their own business, coming to the place where Jesus was. And Herod knew because there was talk in his area about Jesus being born, about the Messiah being born. He tried to have Jesus killed because he set for all the young babies, the male babies, to be killed. It's crazy. The devil knew that Jesus was being born, but he didn't know where. He couldn't get to him because God had set a hedge of protection around him. So even there at Jesus' birth, where the wise men were, devil couldn't get to him. God has power. God is in control. There's nothing that the devil can do to stop what God has planned. And that's comforting to know. So we also saw later on Gamaliel and Nicodemus, who had followings of people who listened to what they had to say. They were theologians in their day, and we believe that they were devout as well because of how they were described in the scriptures. And the many prophets were silenced by the religious establishment. There was infighting because of the way that people looked at prophecy. So how should we govern ourselves? We should look into the scriptures. We should ponder them. We should pray. We should intercede for our people. We should intercede for the world. We should intercede for Israel so that we can also see the revelation of Jesus Christ and see the revelation of what the Lord has promised. Can we see, so we can see the manifestation of what the Lord has promised. And if we don't see it, we believe that he'll also reveal some things to us as well. So looking at Jacob's trouble more specifically, we saw this in Matthew when we started this study back in Matthew, chapter 24. Verse 15 is where Jesus starts talking about Jacob's trouble or he starts talking about what we commonly call the Great Tribulation. And this is what he said. Matthew, chapter 24, verse 15. "When ye therefore shall see the abomination of desolation spoken of by Daniel the prophet, stand in the holy place; who so readeth, let him understand." So that's something we need to pay attention to. It may not be absolutely clear. It may not be a man standing in a particular place. It may be an image standing in a particular place. It's talked about that after Jerusalem, around the time Jerusalem was restored, 70 AD, that a pig was slaughtered in the temple, which is sacrilege. That is definitely an anti-God thing. It's disrespectful. God is blasphemous. But that wasn't the abomination which causes desolation. It says, verse 16, "Then let them which are in Judea, which be in Judea, flee unto the mountains; let he which is on the housetop come not down to take anything out of his house; neither let him, which is in the field, return back to take his clothes; and woe unto them that are with child, and to them that give suck in those days. But pray," there's an admonition to pray, "that your flight be not in winter, neither on the Sabbath day; for then shall be great tribulation, such as was not since the beginning of the world to this time, nor ever shall be. And except those days should be shortened, there should no flesh be saved; but for the elect's sake those days shall be shortened. And if any man say unto you, 'Lo, here is Christ,' or 'Lo, there, believe it not; for there shall arise false Christs and false prophets, as you shall show great signs and wonders, in so much that if it were possible, they shall deceive the very elect. Behold, I have told you before. Wherefore, if they say unto you, 'Behold, he is in the desert, go not forth; behold, he is in the secret chambers, believe it not.'" So Jesus is warning us at that time because we know the Bible tells us, and we know that the devil knows that soon after the time of the abomination of desolation, when the Antichrist is revealed, that Jesus is coming back to destroy the Antichrist and his army. And because the devil knows that Jesus is coming back, because we know that Jesus is coming back after that time, it said, the Bible said, Jesus said, "There'll be a lot of false prophets. There'll be a lot of false Christs, people who think they are Jesus and think they are the Messiah and try to draw people to themselves and say, 'Hey, you can get away from the Antichrist by coming to me.' Don't do it, because that's the devil, trying to deceive the people of God and trying to deceive those people who have not yet taken the mark." I'm seeing mounting evidence that there are people who will not take the mark of the beast, but perhaps yet haven't given their lives to Christ. There are over seven billion people in the world, and there'll be a lot of opportunities for people to make decisions. So let's get ready to head on to the next part of what we're talking about. And I did want to mention the mounting evidence that this could be an Islamic Antichrist because of the Hudna, which is a contract that is signed, but it's not worth the paper it's written on because Muslims do believe that it's a principle in Islam that you can lie as long as the ends justify the means. So in order for Islam to take over, in order for there to be a Sharia law everywhere, in order for them to have control, they'll sign a peace treaty, but the peace treaty will be broken. And we know that there, within Muslim sacred texts, that it is okay to sign a treaty and not really mean what's in the treaty. So why is this important? Well, it's important for us as individuals because we need to not only know what's happening in the world, but the Lord has told us to pray that their flight be not in winter. So let's pray that when the Antichrist is revealed, it's not in winter, that there's good weather so they can get out because there'll be a big run that happens at that time. And I'm looking forward to the Lord's deliverance, but that time is not going to be a good time. And if we're around at that time, we're going to have to be running and making sure we're protecting ourselves as well. All right. So we know that the Antichrist is the Antichrist because he is revealed by standing where he ought not, or that thing, the abomination that causes desolation, stands where it ought not, in the holy place. And when that happens, we'll know who he is. But the holy place, which is the temple, hasn't yet been built. But I'd like to say that for the last 20 years, or over the last 20 years, since I've been studying Bible prophecy, since I've been aware of Bible prophecy, I've also been aware of the Temple Institute. And maybe about five years before then, I was saved in 1996, maybe around 1991 or so, early 1990s. The Temple Institute was established in Israel, and they began, even 20 years ago, there were articles of the temple which were made, the articles, the treasures that had been plundered by Rome and had, before then, had been plundered by the Babylonians. Those sacred objects have been recreated for the use of daily sacrifice, for the use of service to God in the Holy Temple. And so we're going to look at first the Fuel Project video regarding the third temple. And then we have a couple of extra videos to show you about how people are already making preparations for the building of the third temple.
Then I was given a measuring stick, and I was told, "Go and measure the temple of God and the altar, and count the number of worshippers; but do not measure the outer courtyard, for it has been turned over to the nations. They will trample the holy city for forty-two months; and I will give power to my two witnesses, and they will be clothed in burlap, and will prophesy during those one thousand two hundred and sixty days." Before we look at the identity of the two witnesses, there are some important pieces of information from this passage to consider. Firstly, you'll notice that the Bible expresses the time of Jacob's trouble in many different ways. In this passage, it says that, "They will trample the holy city for forty-two months." And then in the next sentence, it's expressed as one thousand two hundred and sixty days. It all refers to the same time period. Three and a half years is forty-two months, which is one thousand two hundred and sixty days. There's a fourth way, which is found in Daniel. Then I, Daniel, looked and saw two other angels standing on opposite banks of the river. One of them asked the man dressed in linen, who was now standing above the river, "How long will it be until these shocking events are over?" The man dressed in linen, who was now standing above the river, raised both his hands toward heaven and took a solemn oath by the one who lives forever, saying, "It will go on for a time, times, and half a time; when the shattering of the holy people has finally come to an end, all these things will have happened." A time is one year, times is two years, and half a time is half a year. So a time, times, and half a time equals three and a half years, which is forty-two months or one thousand two hundred and sixty days. It's always the same time period. Whenever you see these numbers, it's always referring to Jacob's trouble. Secondly, notice that John is given a measuring stick and told to, "Go and measure the temple of God." This is significant because it means the temple of God will exist in Jerusalem during the sixth trumpet. Why is this significant? Because right now, the temple does not exist. Indeed, there hasn't been a temple in Jerusalem since the last one was destroyed by the Romans in 70 AD. Where the temple used to stand on Temple Mount, Mount Miraya, there is now only the Islamic Al-Aqsa Mosque at the Dome of the Rock shrine. So obviously, at some point in the future, prior to the sixth trumpet, that mosque is going to be torn down and a temple built in its place. What kind of political situation is going to have to occur before the Al-Aqsa Mosque is destroyed and replaced with a Jewish temple? Perhaps the kind of situation where an Antichrist pretends to be on the side of Israel by offering them as a token of peace the opportunity to retake control of Temple Mount so that they can rebuild their temple, only to turn on them once it has been completed so that he can use it as an idolatrous throne for himself. We don't know exactly. It's one of those events that doesn't seem to be in view right now, but could easily come into view at any time. It could happen tomorrow. We just know that there will be a temple there by the sixth trumpet. However it happens, when it happens, it will be the third by the sight. The first temple was built by King Solomon, and it was destroyed in 586 B.C., when Israel was invaded and taken into slavery in Babylon. The second temple was built when the Israelites returned from that captivity, having been let go by King Antiserces. That was the one that Gabriel told Daniel about, the one whose destruction was predicted by Jesus at the beginning of the Olivet Discourse, and the one that actually was destroyed by the Romans in 70 AD. The third temple will be constructed according to the detailed measurements prophesied in Ezekiel, chapters 40 to 44. No temple has yet been built according to Ezekiel's design in those chapters, so it must be a reference to the third one, which will occupy Temple Mount in the end times. We will go into the specifications here, but I recommend that you turn to Ezekiel 40 to 44 now and examine the measurements. Is there any evidence that this temple could be built in the near future? Absolutely. In fact, the importance of a third temple to the Jews, particularly Orthodox Jews, can't be understated. They believe the building of the third temple to be absolutely vital for the coming of their Messiah. They didn't recognize him the first time, of course, and are therefore driven to make sure that they gain control of Temple Mount again to herald his arrival. In their eyes, the building of a third temple wouldn't just anticipate his coming, it would speed it up. So the third temple is not and will not be driven by Christians. Christians understand that Christ obsoletted in these rough physical temples. Rather, the whole endeavor is and will continue to be driven by the Jews, especially Orthodox Jews, who want to have the temple in its place so that they can reinstate daily sacrifices. Again, Christians know that the Mosaic Law that requires daily sacrifices has been abrogated by the New Covenant. But Orthodox Jews, believing in the Mosaic Law to still be applicable, would continue the practice of animal sacrifice to atone for sins if they had the temple in place. There is no question of them building a temple and reinstating sacrifices anywhere else either. They would not feel at liberty to move the Holy of Holies to any other location. It must be Temple Mount on Jerusalem. So strong is the desire to build a third temple there that most of the plans for its construction are already in place. Indeed, organizations like the Temple Institute and Temple Mount Faithful have not only produced the building plans according to Ezekiel's specifications, but they've also made the ritual objects and garments that would be used by the priests within. Some of these objects are on display in the old city right now. The desperate hope of these organizations is that when conditions allow it to be built, everything will be ready ahead of time, and the building process will be extremely quick. In fact, so advanced are these plans that it's estimated that the whole temple In fact, so advanced are these plans, that it's estimated that the whole temple could be built in as little as eighteen months. As I said, we don't know when the go-ahead will be given. It's one of those events that could happen any day now, but certainly it's plausible that the Antichrist could be the one to negotiate its construction at the outset of the initial three and a half year period of peace. That would certainly gain the trust of the Jewish people and cause them to drop their guard. Either way, this is a key event that we should be watchful for. When we see control of Temple Mount transferring to the Jews, and when we see construction begin on a third temple, we'll know that another vital piece of the puzzle is falling into place.
All right, so we see the temple, the Third Temple, hasn't yet been built, but there are, there are plans, and there have been plans for quite some time for that being built. As Mark fairly said, it could happen in as little as eighteen months. I think it's very interesting that the Lord gave this to John while he was on a Greek island in the middle of the Aegean Sea, he had been away from Jerusalem. He didn't see what was going on there at the time, but this was years, maybe up to twenty years after the Second Temple had been destroyed. The Second Temple was destroyed in seventy A.D. by the Roman Empire, and then John of Revelation wrote his book under the rule of Domitian, which was between eighty-one and ninety-six A.D. So many years after the temple had been destroyed, had been leveled, did not exist anymore, there was no sacrifice happening, John prophesied about the Antichrist revealing himself in the temple. So John knew that a third temple would be built, and when the Lord revealed it to him, it was indeed prophecy. He wasn't talking about a building that was there and that the Antichrist would come to. So he knew it would be at some time in the future. Now, we saw on the screen the picture that Mark fairly showed of the Third Temple, what it would look like in place. And for the advertisement for today's session, we also, I had a picture of what the Third Temple, or an estimate, or an approximation of what the Third Temple would look like in place on Temple Mount. So I'm trying to see if I can show that to you really quickly. So what I'm gonna do is see if I can do a screen share here and show you what that would look like. Right now, I've got a black screen for photos, so you may not see the photo as I see. I hope that you can see this picture of the Third Temple right here on Temple Mount. I've got another way to look at that as well, so I'm gonna see if I can do that, stop sharing, go back to the video. But I've got another idea that I actually had shown in the previous session on how the Temple Mount may be set up on, at the time of the Third Temple. So I'm gonna bring that picture up and let you see that, because that actually would go along with the day and the time that we're living in right now. Let me see if I can get this to show on your screen. All right, Google may work better than my, my Windows, Windows Picture Viewer. So let's take a look at a couple pictures here. All right, share the screen with you. All right, here we are. This is again, another look at the Third Temple as we see it by itself on the Temple Mount. It's another angle than the one that I showed you just a moment ago. But let's take a look, so I'm showing my screen, at another idea, and that's this one here. Al-Aqsa Mosque and the Jewish temple side by side on Temple Mount. And I know I'm thinking, far be it, this shouldn't be, that's sacrilegious to have a Muslim mosque next door to a Jewish temple. But the Jews, in order to actually be able to do their sacrifices, there's possibility they could actually allow it, even though it says on the Dome of the Rock, and I don't know over which arch it is, but it says, "Far be it for God to have a son." In other words, this is the spirit of the Antichrist right here. Where the spirit of Antichrist says that Jesus is not the Son of God, but where it says God doesn't have a son is on the Dome of the Rock. And so you've got, and the Al-Aqsa Mosque is actually a different building, this is the Dome of the Rock. But the temple's here, and the mosque, the Dome of the Rock building is here. That seems crazy, but in the pluralistic society that we're living in now, I could actually see this coming to pass, even though it's a great offense to have this here. We know that we are the temple of the Holy Ghost, and that a building is not as Christians, but Jews still operate under the Old Testament. So that's one view, and one other view of the way the temple may look. And there's another similar idea that I wanted to show you right here, that shows the temple and the Dome of the Rock being right next to each other. I'm gonna blow that up, so you can see it. So there you have the temple in one place, and the Dome of the Rock in another place. And it's thought that it may be that the Dome of the Rock is actually on the court of the Gentiles in the, where the Temple Mount originally was, or where the temple originally was, that this is the court of the Gentiles. And as we saw in Revelation, it says that John should measure where the temple is, but don't count the court of the Gentiles, because that has been given over to the Gentiles. And Muslims are by and large Gentiles, and that may be the actual fulfillment of that prophecy. So that's amazing to me. So what I'm really excited about showing you this evening is the next two videos. The next two videos are by the Temple Institute. And the Temple Institute, I mean, when I first started reading up on these things, when I first started studying these things, things at least may have been how the internet was back then in the nineties, very slow, pictures loaded, so you may remember all that. But the, everything was rather rudimentary, it was like, okay, we have some vessels here. But I was still excited about it, because I couldn't believe that they had made as much progress as they had. However, the, now, things, we're in the twenty-first century now, it's two thousand fifteen, and the Temple Institute has not been left behind. So we're gonna look at their presentation, which was just published several weeks ago. Their presentation, a digital rendering of the Third Temple, which they intend to build as soon as they have permission. All right, let's take a look at their presentation.
Jerusalem, eternal city of God. The very word is a symphony to the ear for all to whom the Bible is precious. And at the heart of Jerusalem lies its secret, the Holy Temple on Mount Meriah, place of the Shchina, the Divine Presence, called by Isaiah, the house of prayer for all nations. For two thousand years, the Jewish people have prayed to return to the land of Israel, to Jerusalem, and to rebuild the Holy Temple. Today, we have returned. The city of Jerusalem is built up by thriving, vibrant city. But what of Jerusalem's secret? What of the dream? For over two decades, the Temple Institute has been recreating the biblically appointed vessels to be used in the Holy Temple in preparation for its rebuilding. Tens of sacred vessels have been completed. These vessels and priestly garments, unexhibited in the Temple Institute's treasures of the Holy Temple exhibition in Jerusalem's Old City, are not copies or replicas, but are actually fit to be used according to strict biblical standards in the New Holy Temple. Original source materials such as gold, silver, and copper, and the original sizes and measurements are used exclusively. Each year, one hundred thousand visitors come to see, learn about, and experience the promise of the Holy Temple. A visit to the Temple Institute is the highlight of a trip to Israel, for in the presence of these vessels, one can feel that the time of the redemption is indeed drawing close. The golden menorah, the golden table of the Shabbat, the incense altar, and tens of other sacred vessels have been painstakingly and precisely recreated. Silver trumpets, levitical harps and lyres are ready to be heard once again in the streets of Jerusalem. The priestly garments, including the uniform of the high priest, the ephode, the breastplate, and the golden crown, the result of years of intense research and the efforts of Israel's finest artists and craftsmen, are on display for all to see. The Temple Institute provides specially trained guides who explain the history of the Holy Temple, the nature of the divine service, and the significance of the Holy Temple for all mankind.
And there you have it. The Third Temple plans are in place, and we're, I need to stop sharing, so you can see me. There we are. So the Third Temple plans are in place, they're ready to begin building as soon as they're given the go-ahead. And I don't know about you, but for me, that was exciting. It was exhilarating, and my spirit rejoices in seeing those videos, because it lets me know that Jesus is on His way. Just to see the temple built would be a blessing indeed. And I think it would be that for all Christians to see the temple built, even though it doesn't do us any spiritual good to have it there, it still would be a blessing to see the children of Israel be able to, at least to attempt to commune with God through the temple. So it's time, again, it's praying time, it's time for us to get prepared, to tell others, to let our family and friends know that Jesus is real. The book of Revelation is a lot to give to someone who's not already in a relationship with the Lord Jesus, but if we can just get people to Jesus, then the rest of the knowledge will come. There's a post that I made yesterday, a sister, one of the other sisters that I know, said, posted a post by John Haggie, which said, "God does not expect understanding, he expects obedience." And so, because we don't understand everything, we know it part, we prophesy it part, but what we do know is to obey what he has already told us, and those things are what we're responsible for. So it's for us to pray, it's for us to intercede, it's for us to obey, it's for us to get ready. So until next time, may God richly bless you, my beloved.